Mr. Chair, you have a quorum now, but I would recommend waiting a little bit and giving some other people a chance to sign on.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Let's give it a few.
Michael, why is your name BH173419? Sounds like a prison number.
Well, you haven't seen me in a while, have you? It's, I'm on my work computer. So that's my, you all know my Belmont ID number now.
It's the restraining order.
Our contractor is trying to get in.
Okay. He should be able to. You don't have to let, he just has to sign in. He's good to go. He's got the, the numbers and everything for the pass.
I can email an invite. Do you want me to do that? Does somebody need it?
Oh, hang on. Let me, hold on one second here.
His message says the host will let you in soon.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah. Oh, that's you. I forgot. I keep looking for people that need to come in. You're the host now.
No, we're getting, okay, I'm assuming Brian's iPhone is Brian.
There we go. Open the floodgate.
Okay. Now we have.
I think I made it.
Hey, David. Okay, Mr. Chair, I believe we have everybody that we're going to have for this evening. You should feel free to start the meeting.
Okay, great. Call to order at, I've got 7:03. We will go around the room and try to do a roll call. Start with, you know, let me try this on the screen. So Blake.
Present.
Michelle.
Present.
Michelle, are you our, our new liaison to, from?
She's a neighbor.
She's a, she's a neighbor.
Oh, I thought we were, she was our new commission liaison.
No.
Hi, everyone. It's Lily and Michelle here tonight.
Jill.
Which Jill? Present.
Sorry, okay, Jill Inver and Jill Plamper. Did I hear both of you?
Yep, Jill Inver also present.
And David is here.
I'm here.
And it looks like Rick is here.
Here.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm flipping back and forth here between the Zoom and the agenda here, guys. So, okay, first order is to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All set there? Approval of minutes for May 26, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Pretty great. So we're gonna start with site plan approval for the addition at the Supporren residence at 25524 Wareham. Do you have a contractor presenting or is it gonna be the homeowner?
I'm here. Brian with Metro Home Improvement.
Don't crash. Okay, we will let you kick it off.
We are applying for the variance for the second story addition. We had originally applied for a second story and then there were some changes and there were some additional items that needed to be addressed, which I believe we, I've addressed thoroughly with Hank. We did get the approval for a single story. And then subsequently, we found out that we had a second story that was approved once before and went through the process and it, it met the requirements of what we're asking for. So therefore, we are hoping to get that granted to build a two-story.
Perhaps I can offer a little clarification, Michael, and then Brian can chime back in if he feels that I've left anything out. They're not asking for a variance. They've already been through the zoning board of appeals and gotten an interpretation. What they are asking for is they're asking for site plan approval for the project for the second story. The first story, one approval didn't need site plan approval because it was simply a brick addition and it met all the requirements not to have to go to the planning commission. Now that they're doing something a little bit different and the plans don't indicate a couple things, which I'll go over, they're here before the planning commission to ask for just a simple site plan approval. The structure is brick. It has windows. There is a couple questions and things that we do need to clarify from some of the elevations. So with that, unless, you know, Brian wanted to add anything, if Supporrens wanted to add anything right now, I'll just go through the plan and if there's any questions, we'll certainly be able to answer them.
Works for me. Anything to add from Brian or Miss Porrens?
I would, yeah.
Hank, I do, I have a question. I am getting a little bit of amnesia on this. Do I have to abstain from this?
You did vote on the zoning board of appeals, so you do have to abstain from it.
Okay, got it. Come on, just wanted to verify. I wasn't sure if it worked both ways.
Right, that's how it typically works. So, what I'd like to look at, and I can put these up on the, let me put this up on the screen. Where did it go? Okay. Hang on one second here. For some reason, this isn't going.
We need a 12-year-old kid as a consultant.
That would be helpful, Sheldon, because if I could, I could get this.
I'm gonna get thin.
It's not letting me put up, okay, here we go, share screen, got it. Now let's see if it'll do this. All right, let's.
Hank?
Yeah.
Can you check the waiting room?
Yeah, just give me a second here. I'm trying to.
Yeah, thank you.
This up, I will be happy to do that. Okay. So we got that. And then, hold on one second, let me get the.
It's showing, Hank.
Okay, I do want to make sure to let the other people in the, that were in the waiting room too. All right, hold on just a second. Okay. Okay, so this is what we have here. If you guys can, can y'all see this?
Yes.
Okay, so some of the questions that we had that came up that we need to clarify is our, on this particular elevation, which is labeled the north elevation, here is, this is a side that faces one of the neighbors. It calls out two windows with two arrows here, but it doesn't have them shown on the plan. So either, there should be windows there, which takes away a lot of our concerns, or there should not be windows there and this comment should be removed. So I would ask either Brian or the Supporrens to comment on that particular issue.
I believe that it was probably. I believe that it was probably an oversight on the architect when he drew the plan since we had made numerous revisions.
Okay.
They probably didn't transfer over on the PDF. However, I can give you an addendum and I can submit that to you for the size of the windows because those would need to meet egress.
Okay, so that's why I just want to clarify that there are supposed to be windows there so that, because that's gonna come up. One of the planning commissioners is gonna ask it, so I'd rather bring it up and see that there's some issues with that. Also, on this particular part.
I do see that.
Okay, on this particular part here, which is the main house, there shows a window that's faded and then two other windows that are faded. So are the faded windows here or not here? And then particularly on the upper floor, it shows that the window is faded out, but there's no comment addressing this.
I believe that those windows, I, I'm sorry, was that Steve?
Karen. It was Karen. Those are the diamond windows. They're, they're there and upstairs.
Okay, and then the one above that, is that?
Yeah.
That's there as well. Okay, so all the windows that are shown on the original elevation are there and they're just not faded out for any particular reason. So, okay.
It's probably due to the fact that we've made copies of this plan and it didn't pick it up from when we went to Image Mart and had these plans reproduced.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I didn't catch that.
Yeah, it's, it's not a problem. The only thing that I want to make sure of is the windows that are in the addition on the north elevation, should the planning commission favor with an approval this evening, the motion should include that the windows being included in that elevation. They're listed, but they're not shown. So that's.
Yeah.
And then.
I agree.
Are those windows that are there, Ryan, are they matching the windows that are on the other side of the elevation in size and dimension?
Yes, if you look at the elevation, which I believe would be to the east. Or south, I'm sorry. If you notice those windows, they're, they're symmetrical. All the windows would be symmetrical to one another.
Okay, so then those are the windows there so that we now have sizes for those windows where the planning commission understand. Okay.
Yes.
Other than, other than that, what we have here is a plan that is a brick plan. The roof line is below the original line of the house. They have their zoning clearance for the addition. And what we would need is a site plan approval for this. Based on that, that was the only issues that we really had with the plan. So if the planning commission has any questions other than that, I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, it meets the maximum height, it meets the front yard setback, and that's not being touched. You're good on the sides and rear. Your lot coverage is 28.4, so it's under the maximum lot coverage size. The house size has already been worked out by the zoning board of appeals. And you have a, and what else was I gonna tell you here? The lot is 7,750 square feet. It's 50 by 151. It's irregular in nature. One of the neighboring lots is substantially larger, 12,000 square feet. Another neighbor's lot is a little bit less, it's 7,350. The house comes in at 3,300 plus square feet. Neighbor to the north is 2,618. Neighbor to the south is just over 2,000 square feet. There is a, this is a colonial. The neighbor to the south is a colonial. The Tudor Revival is to the north. They're two-story houses. It's made out of brick, including the addition. Clarification, if you could, Brian, on the windows, I'm assuming they're a clad wood window?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Other than that, if there's any questions from the planning commission, I'm happy to answer them, as I'm sure Mr. Lee is and I'm sure the Supporrens would be happy to answer anything that they could as well.
Hank, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Can you make me co-host so that I can watch the waiting room? Then that way you don't have to watch it and do the plans at the same time.
Okay, what, how do?
You go to my, go to my name. There should be some, like three dots and click on that and you have the option to make me a co-host.
Already done.
Oh, thank you.
Bless your heart. Thank you. I appreciate the help.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, other than that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public participation. If you have something to say, if you could just announce your name and state your address, that would be helpful for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if you're doing public participation, I want to point out, we did receive email or email correspondence, which I did forward to the planning commission just prior to the meeting. The neighbors, one across and one on each side, were in support of the project.
I did see that. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Michelle Elder and my daughter would like to speak.
Amy, can you let the waiting room?
My name is Lily Elder. I live next door to Steve and Karen. Me and my family support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, that said, we will close public participation and we'll go around the room. I'm gonna just go down the Zoom here and start with Blake.
I think, you know, given that zoning has already cleared it and we're just looking at site approval with Brian's egress windows as an addendum, I think it looks great. Also think it's important that all the neighbors have already kind of signed off on it, so I, I say let's do it.
Great, thanks Blake. I have Sheldon next.
Okay, thank you, Hank. I've got a couple questions. I'm seeing a number of 3,352 at the bottom of the first page of your comments in 3,352 about, oh, three or four paragraphs down. And then I'm seeing 3,322 under the old max house size. Which one?
3,352 is what we start with before we take everything out that the zoning board of appeals allowed us to take out. So they, they are, the zoning board of appeals is satisfied that this project meets the maximum house size with their, with their new interpretations, which I have to, every time we do staircases and elevators, I have to address.
Okay. All right, because I, that, that.
It threw you for a few square feet, I understand.
Yeah, okay, I'm talking, was it 3,322, 3,350? Yeah, okay, got it. Is that going, is that a, an issue you have to address every time there's an elevator?
That's what we are going to address it and at some point in time, we'll be back to you with a, perhaps an ordinance change that will accommodate elevators and staircases. We're just not there yet. We don't get that many of them, but this is one that does have it proposed. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
I have, I have some concerns about the lack of fenestration on the north side, but that the neighbors on the north side have signed off on it and supported, I guess, you know. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dig in on that particular.
On, on the north side, just, just so that you were clear, Sheldon, the two uppers on the addition, that was where we were talking about where the arrows were shown, but it wasn't pointing to anything. Those windows, there will be two windows there that are matched from the other side, will match that side. So the fenestration on the addition will be significantly changed.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Lee?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I, I'm good with it as long as our motion to approve the plan, if we do that, includes those caveats about the windows.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
I think Brian agreed to offer an addendum with the zgress windows.
He did.
But the addendum isn't in front of it.
True.
But if you just include it as part of the motion, should you favor this project with the motion, that would be sufficient. Mr. Lee will have those corrected and then when the plans come in for building plans, they'll have to match what the motion is for what it's approved. We'll take care of that administratively, assuming you vote to approve this.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, thanks Sheldon. Let's see, next up, it looks like I have David.
Um, plan looks good, subject to all the explanations already given. I'm good with it.
Thank you, sir. Jill Inver.
I'm fine with it as well. I mean, I think, I just agree that, I mean, if we, if we do vote to approve it, that the motion would have to say, windows put in also would be of equal, I think we said clad wood windows similar to, or like the ones on the other, on the other elevations, so. Yeah, I think it looks nice.
You could actually say to match the south elevation, Jill.
Okay, so I would, I approve it with that notation.
Thanks Jill. I have Jeff next.
I never received a packet, so I really can't comment on it. Thank you.
Jeff, you're copied on the email that it went out as.
Normally I get a packet. I didn't look for housing plans on any kind of email. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. We'll fix that for next time.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Next, I've got Rick.
I'm okay with it as long as we include the windows. I, I do want to make a note that we can't really say that it's to match the south elevation though, as a mere image.
You can specify this, yeah, specify the sizes.
The size is okay to match the south, but I think we should include something on the placement of those windows relative either to the closets or the windows below. So I think we'd be okay as long as we said either centered in the closet based on the plan or symmetric to the, the first floor windows and placement.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see here. I apologize, guys. My Zoom list here is bouncing all over the place. I think next up, we have Jill Plamper.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I, I think most of my concerns have already been addressed and spoken to. The, I think the windows do obviously need to be not shown on the plan or referenced in the, writer, please, referenced in the, the motion. But other than that, I appreciate the fact that you've done it out of brick. I appreciate the fact that you're keeping the roof line below the original roof line. So from the front, it's less visible. I think that is a good thing. So other than that, I, I don't have any issues.
Okay, great. Thanks Jill. It looks like next we have Ben.
Ben signed your zoning board.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You're used to that. You're too used to that.
Yeah, I saw him on there and, so did I miss anybody on the planning commission? I'm sorry. And the, this is moving around a little bit and I heard it go around the room than I thought.
I believe you have everybody, but you'd have to call for a roll call vote and list their names and they'll have to say, because we have to have a roll call vote on that.
Okay, sounds good. So I guess we are looking for a motion at this point.
I motion, this is Blake Moore. I motion to approve.
Do a second.
Wait, 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 wait.
We need windows.
Yeah, you need to articulate the language for the windows.
I need to do that or Mike does?
Whoever's making the motion.
I can do it. This is Rick. Motion to approve plan is presented with the addition of two 40 by 56 double hung egress windows on the north elevation to be either symmetrical with the windows on the first floor or centered in the walk-in closets.
Okay, thanks Rick. Second, was that Jill Plamper on second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You need to do a roll call vote.
Yeah, we need to hear Sheldon, yes. You know, you need to say who you are and a yes.
Oh, sorry, I, I thought we were doing that kind of via video. Okay, so we'll go, we'll go around. Sorry, so Rick made the motion, Jill Plamper made the second. Blake, yea or nay?
Uh, yea.
Jill Inver?
Yea.
Sheldon?
Um, is that sufficient detail on the windows? Because I think there was comment about stuff that was faded out and it was represented by Blake to be included in the plan.
It was, it was, the, the windows that were there, the, for clarification on that, the faded windows that I was talking about that were on the north elevation are already in the existing structure and we clarified that those exist currently and they're not being added or removed.
Okay, then I'm good. I vote yea.
Thank you. So we have David.
Yea.
Jeff?
Abstain.
Jill Plamper?
Yea.
And I think I got everybody.
You.
I can't vote.
Oh, right, you're abstaining. Okay. So we have five?
I believe we do.
Okay, let me, one, two, three, four, five, yes. Okay. Thank you. Then you have a, you have a past project.
Congratulations. Sorry, it was a little clunky there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hank, I will get with you, I will get with you tomorrow if that works for you at some juncture.
Yeah, absolutely. Give me a call and we're good to go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, Hank.
We appreciate your help, Jill, on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see here, next we have matter of receiving a discussion of the solar energy report with environmental committee.
Okay, we're signing off.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Can you fill us in MS?
Yeah, well, actually what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you a brief synopsis on this and then I'm gonna let either Amy Sullivan or somebody from the environmental advisory committee speak to this. The environmental advisory committee has been reviewing the city's current ordinance regulating solar panels. It is concerned that it creates a barrier for residents who want to reduce their dependence on non-renewable fossil fuels. In January, the planning commission, last Jan, January, the planning commission had sent, had, I'm sorry, considered a proposal to install solar panels at a residence and found the current ordinance language to be what they considered vague. It appears that it would be beneficial for the EAC and planning commission to meet and discuss the possible amendments to the solar ordinance. With that, you've received a memo with the information. You have members of the environmental advisory committee here. Mr. Chairman, unless Amy, if you wanted to add anything else, then if not, then we could hear from the advisory committee.
Can you take the, the share screen down so we can see each other?
How about that? Yeah. Better?
Yeah, look at everybody's faces.
Wow, what a great crew.
Yeah, this is a initiative that's been spearheaded by Aaron Reddish and Ben Felix. So do you two want to give an overview of what we want to discuss tonight or do you want me to do it?
I would defer to you, Amy or Aaron, I think is our resident authority.
Go ahead, Amy.
So the solar ordinance is something that the environmental advisory committee has been looking at because it's obviously something that they want to support and encourage our residents to utilize. The ordinance right now says that if you place a solar ordinance, I think on the back of the house, you don't need approval from the planning commission, but if you put it on the side or the front, that it does need approval. And this actually went to the planning commission, I think in December or January. And the planning commission was confused by the ordinance language itself. It's not real clear what the standards were in order to approve it. And because of that vagueness, the project was denied. So the environmental advisory committee would like to discuss with you, the, the first proposal would be just to remove any restrictions on where solar panels could be placed and that they would be permitted by right. So that you would not have to go to the planning commission for approval. If you're gonna put solar panels on the front, back or side of the house, you would need to go through with the building permit process to make sure that they were installed properly, et cetera. But in terms of site plan review, you would not need to go to the planning commission. The one caveat. You would not need to go to the plan commission. The one caveat here is the historic district commission still would retain purview over any panels in historic district, but anything outside of the historic district. The Environmental Advisory Committee would like to explore with you making that permitted by right. I think it might be helpful to go to planning commissioner, planning commissioner Michael, if you're comfortable with that and get the thoughts from everyone.
Amy, could I just maybe clarify one thing before we started? Does that include ground placement or just structural placement?
Just roof mounted.
Thank you.
Michael, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry. No, I was muted there. So yeah, I guess we could just go around and get some thoughts and then actually, you know what? I'm going to open this up for public participation first, just to see if there's anybody out there that wants to speak. Okay, hearing none will close public participation and get some thoughts around the room. Sheldon, you want to start?
Sure. I guess I'm not ready to give up planning commission approval. If I've got no objection to tightening up ambiguities that might be in the ordinance. To give us more firm or even allowing administration to sign off if it meets certain specific criteria. But I am not willing to say, for instance, that panels can be installed on the front of the house without having some control over appearance and you know, that that's I'm just not willing to give a carte blanche. Based on ordinance, I've got nothing against the objective in removing barriers. But I'm not just willing to sign off on whatever somebody wants to call the solar panel. That's where I am.
Fair enough. Thank you. Blake?
Yeah, this is sort of a tricky one. This came up, I think, before I joined the board and I heard a little bit about it. And I have mixed feelings about it, so I I'm not sure is the honest answer. The notion of being able to put them anywhere is a little bit of a challenge, but I also think, I think there's sort of a notion that solar panels are unsightly, which is a general consensus. And I think it's it's problematic because we have a lot of things that become essential utility for our homes that are a little bit unsightly that aren't necessarily regulated. So having said all of that, I'm gonna you know, I'm going to defer judgment and listen a little bit because I'm not sure how I feel about it.
Great, thanks Blake. David?
I kind of agree with that consensus. When we had that prior case, we went through the rules and I don't think there was a an issue with some interpretation. I think we denied the plan as presented. So I don't think we want to give up that authority yet. But at that time, we encouraged this dialogue and having a discussion between the two committees, but not ceding control of the decision. Which I think was made because of the plan presented at the time.
Great, thanks dude. Rick?
I would disagree with the previous comments. I want to relinquish control over this and allow for it. We can put in conditions. But I think we should be encouraging solar in the city. And we have a lot of homes that this ruling would prevent. And there's no language in there to really allow us to determine if it's ineffective or impractical. And I felt like the last time we went through this, that that installation was impractical without the street facing roof. But we had no way to approve that. So I would like to pull this out with the planning commission and allow it.
Great. Thanks Rick. Let's see here. Jeff?
You're muted.
It's much better than. I agree with Rick. We through the historic district as people want to make changes. Hank has worked with them. So the material and the look has a blend to it. If it goes above the roof line. It shouldn't, but the reality is, is today there are very, very attractive solar panels that allow people, as far as I understand, to get off the grid and lower their long-term costs. I would like to see this somehow withdrawn, but at the same time have some general ideas or concepts that are in the minutes from this meeting. Which will give Hank some kind of ways of being able to say to someone. These are the reasons why aesthetically, I don't think it's practical or whatever the appropriate language is. And then bring it back to us or allow obviously an appeal to zoning if we say no based on Hank's comments. But I would like us to have the opportunity for professional staff to work with someone so that it does blend in. I can assure you pop-ups that come on the roofs to add an additional room are not perfectly aesthetic and the hardy plank that hangs on the second floor of a home which is done in brick in between two homes done in brick is not aesthetic. So it's not necessarily going to be from my point of view, a perfect solution, but I think where someone has been very, very impractical that Hank can work with them. So I would like to really see this removed, but the general concepts towards planning and zoning honored in the process.
Mr. Chairman, for some clarification on this, in the historic district. We have, there are certain things that are given to me or powers that are given to me for administrative approvals by the historic district. So you could take several different actions with this and I realize that Jill hasn't had a chance to comment. Neither has Jill or neither is Michael. But after this discussion, you can decide you want more information. We can not take any action. You can ask for a you know, like a basic ordinance or something, or what would it look like? And we can propose some stuff for you for discussion. But if there's a consensus among the planning commission that you do want to go forward with this. Then I would need direction in that regard as to how you want to proceed. But in there are, for example, I have a list of probably, I'm looking at it now, about fifteen different things that I can administratively approve. Provided they meet certain conditions from the historic district commission so that not everybody has to go to the historic district commission. Of course, could do something similar with that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, let's see here. Jill Ingber?
Well, that was sort of my question. As I'm looking at the memo on this, there so there wasn't any revised ordinance language proposed. Am I right?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that I'm not opposed to this coming off the planning commissions for, I mean, I think that sort of makes sense, but I do think there needs to be some level of scrutiny and whether that means Hank, like you suggest to have certain guidelines that would have to be reached, you know, that you have authority to vet. I'm fine with that. But I mean, to the extent we're about, you know, I can't approve or suggest that we approve any revision to the ordinance, seeing what the proposed revision is. I mean, if the motion then would be to just meet with the Environmental Advisory Committee to come up with that language. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, you also have an opportunity here to have the Environmental Advisory Committee propose some language. And then you could take a look at what it was once it's actually proposed and accept it, modify it, reject it. You have all of those options. So depending on, you know, and again, Jill Plamper and Mike still have to comment, but where I see that you're heading with this is you'd like to have something in front of you to take a look at. And once you do that, then you can probably make more comments relative to what you like, what you don't like, what you feel good about, what you don't feel good about. And have a healthy discussion about it.
This is the kickoff discussion. We're not expecting any action. We're the Environmental Advisory Committee wants thoughts and feedback from each one of you and then we'll have another discussion with the Environmental Advisory Committee. So so far, this has been very helpful.
Well, Blake, I just want to clarify my position a little bit. If the language and are vague and projects are not approved as a result of that, I think that is the burden falls to us to sort of clarify. You know, precisely how that can be established. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not.
That's it. Thanks Blake. Let's go to Jill Plamper.
So I think this is a really great discussion topic to have because I think this is something that's going to start coming up more and more. I don't think it should be just a free for all, whatever the heck you want. I think there has to be some controls on it and I think there has to be some some aesthetic point of view because we do live in a neighborhood where people take pride in how their homes are looking and they they like, they look at the houses across the street from them and I think that there has to be some eye to the aesthetic. That being said, there are many different ways to employ solar. Not just solar panels. If any of you have been to the zoo and seen the solar flower. There are ways to employ solar energy and make it beautiful. So I do think that there has to be some some level of control. I do not want to say that the planning commission is giving up every ounce of control and says, you know, go ahead and do whatever you want. Put it on the front door, put it on the front of the house. We look and we make a big deal out of how many windows someone has on the sides of their houses and in the front of it. And we do that from an aesthetic point of view. We do have to keep an eye to that aesthetic when it comes to solar panels. So I am not in favor of just giving up all control, but I think there needs to be language brought forth and discussed and I think that solar should be encouraged, but we should also encourage homeowners to look beyond simply solar panels. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thanks Jill. Have I missed anybody? Besides myself? Okay, yeah, I have a little bit of a mix, I guess. You know, I think I'm probably a hybrid of everybody. I think planning commission should step away from this, but not without some pretty decent set parameters. I think we should absolutely push solar forward. I think it's a great idea. But I don't want somebody to put a billboard leaning against the side of their house to, you know, power their oven. So yeah, I guess probably my recommendation would be more information. Let's get some solid guardrails around this thing and let the planning commission step away and let Hank do his thing.
All right, this has really been helpful. What I'd like to do is go back around the horn and let us know what the concerns are that would need to be addressed in potential standards or ordinance language. I hear that that there needs to be guardrails, if you will, so help help us figure out what the guardrails are that are most important to you.
So this is Mike. I guess I can kind of start. You know, to me, I think Hank, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think there's an ordinance now where you can't have them on the front of the house. Basically with a restriction that you can't see it from the street. Is that right?
Not so much that you can't see from the street, but the front of the house. The problem with that is a couple different things. In Huntington Woods, the streets are not completely east and west streets. So you have issues where one side of the street can have it, one side of the street, you know, gets it gets a good exposure from the sun. The other does not. You have north and south streets and curve streets. So each lot doesn't get the same opportunity to use solar like it would if you had something more consistent with that. Where you might find help with this is to, and you want to regulate things, height off the roof. Not exceeding the peak of the roof. Non-glaring, like non-glare fixtures. So and like if somebody was looking out their window. They wouldn't catch a reflection from that, like from the second floor window of the house across the street wouldn't be blinded by any reflection off a solar panel. They do make different types of surfaces for that. You know, no ground, you know, placement. Where, you know, what other kinds of things that you would think would be detrimental? If one of the good ways to look at this is if you were living across the street from this, what would you mind? What wouldn't you mind? And kind of model off of that. So if you want to have people say what they feel like, like I know Sheldon had some concerns. You know, Jill was kind of on the fence and you know, some other people were kind of thinking Rick took the position that we should allow solar, you know, whatever the case may be. And maybe have them speak and see what it is that they're looking for. Perhaps we can get a better idea of where Amy and I should take this.
Yeah, I think those are all great points. You know, that's kind of what I was thinking in the back of my head is as much as I think this is a good idea, I don't want somebody to put a solar farm in the front yard. I don't know that anybody in the neighborhood wants that. So you know, maybe basic guardrails as simple as it's got to be on the roof. Yeah, I think you bring up a great point of height off the roof, you know, it should sort of blend into the roof, whether we I think you mentioned, you know, match the pitch of the roof. The glare thing's a good idea. I kind of like all those ideas, you know, basically keeping them on the top of the house and making them as aesthetically reasonable as possible.
Yeah, I will say this, that when the ordinance was originally written. They were far more jarring than they are now and that there are different types of solar panels that have become more innocuous and you don't notice them as much. I don't believe there's ever a time that you won't notice that they're there, but there may be times that you feel like they're not as predominant. So whatever conditions you would want to see on that. We could work on some language with the, you know, I mean, the Environmental Advisory Committee would have to give us some of their concerns and what they would like to see in some of their information because they've already researched this. So it's not to reinvent the wheel.
What I'd like today, since we're all together, Michael, is for you to have the planning commission do exactly what Hank is outlining because I think that's a really good step. But I don't want to make guesses on behalf of the planning commission because eventually this is going to come back to you.
All right, so let's let's do that. Let's just go around the room and maybe if everybody can give one or two bullets on sort of what they'd like to see or what they would not like to see, I guess, around this. Does that work, Amy?
Perfect.
Distill it down a bit. Okay, we'll start with Blake.
Man, I'm still struggling a little bit with this because I feel like as the technology changes, to Jill's point, I have kind of an aesthetic point of view here. But aesthetics in some ways are determined by the technology too. So I get it. I mean, I think we should focus probably on, you know, shoring up some of the rules. Eliminate some of the vagary, be specific about, I liked, you know, Hank's point about you know, making sure that sightline and glares from the other side of the street are taken into consideration. And I think roof mounted gives us a certain amount of latitude to sort of manage aesthetic expectation. So I would start there.
Yeah, I think that brings up a good point because you look at like the Tesla solar roof. It looks like shingles. So we care at that point. Okay, thanks. Jill Ingber?
I'd agree with all of those. I'm trying to think, I mean, I, as long as it's, you know, roof mounted, I would say no freestanding solar panels. I mean, without doing further research to me, I don't have any off the top of my head, but you know, that's a good start.
Thanks Jill. Jeff?
Similar color to the
Similar color to the existing roof, not above or below the roof, non-glare.
Great, thank you. Sheldon?
Well, like a few of us, I guess, I'm still climbing the learning curve on this. And I would second the comments made by you, Mike. And, you know, and those are the kind of concerns that I'm, I guess, I mean, I've heard about the flat panels as opposed to the glaring panels, and that sort of stuff. And I'm anxious to find out what other factors might be involved with this stuff. I'm just not ready to sign off on the front of the house without having some clear limitations on the kind of installation. I mean, I live on the north side of the block, okay? So if I put one up, presumably the panels would face my neighbor across the street. And I just think, I want to know what other factors might be involved in terms of materials and configurations. And I would certainly welcome the input from the ECA on that.
Great, thanks.
You know what, Mike, if I could add, the other thought was, just to add it to the bullet point list, is that installation of it should not require, you know, extensive removal of trees. I think that should be considered.
Great idea.
And Jill, that's something that could be a problem, because if you're looking to apply solar, you need as much sunlight as you can gather. And that requires, if you've got big trees that grow around your house, that could be a detriment to applying solar power. I agree with you. I think that it should prohibit the removal of trees, but I think that that could become a point that people are going to get upset about, because they may want to remove the trees to get the most from the solar power. So I think, and I agree with your point completely. I'm just saying I think it could be something that comes up.
I agree. I think we'd have to put some, and I, you know, it's going to be a subjective term, like extensive, or, you know, something, you know, there has to be some measure of what would be too extensive of a removal, I think, which, which might be being an issue for sure.
Right, well, I actually think that you should prohibit the removal of trees to install solar panels, because you think about it, okay, you're removing the tree to get more sunlight to generate synergy, but trees clean our air. And trees are what Huntington Woods is based on. So I kind of have issues with any removal of trees at all, simply to apply this other alternative energy source. So I have problems with that, so.
For clarification, Mr. Chair, on this, there's two trees. There's private trees, which are owned by the homeowners, and then there's public trees. So for example, Sheldon lives on the north side of the street. He's got a big tree in front of his house, but solar's not useful for his front lawn unless the city tree is removed. So that's a consideration that's going to have to be taken. So not only private trees, but there are public trees that may or may not be involved in this.
But at times, excuse me, at times, private trees are actually, cover other people's property as well. And so you have to be, and the other thing is, is that the tree cover keeps the home cooler and reduces energy usage. So there's a whole lot of things involved in this. So it's kind of, you got to be careful that you're not creating a rob Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. So it just is something you have to be very careful with. And the other thing that you have to think about is, you know, Jill, I also agree with you about the, when you think of the concept of no freestanding solar panels, because you're thinking of the fields of solar panels, right? Or like a line of them. But if someone were to install one of the solar flowers, say, on their front yard, it's almost a piece of art. You have to think, would you object to that, or would you not object to that? So everything's got a level of subjectivity to it that, you know, is going to cause someone a problem. So it's going to be a really, I think it's a very, very fine line to walk between encouraging something that increases the creation of energy and the removal of something that decreases the usage of energy. So this is going to be a very interesting line to walk, and I don't want it to become free for all, is, that's the point that I have. And then if you're looking for like specific points from me, I don't believe it should be on the front of the house. Because when I'm, I enjoy looking at my neighbors' homes, and I don't, I don't know if there's a way to disguise it sufficiently on the front of a house to make it appealing to the general public. So I would, I would kind of want some guardrails against that, installing on the very front of the house.
What is the concern with the front of a house?
Aesthetics, really. If I'm looking across the street at my neighbors as I'm looking at their beautiful colonial across the street, if they took their open brick area space and installed solar panels on it, I would be looking at solar panels with some windows in between and a front door. And that would, and I would find that not to be necessarily aesthetically pleasing. And part of the reason people buy in this neighborhood is because it's beautiful.
Did you?
That's my thing about the front of the house.
Did you reference, when you say the front of the house, do you mean the house proper, or the front of the front roof?
I'm talking about the house proper, to be perfectly honest. And on the front of the roof, I, you know, the roof that comes down the front, I would want it to blend into the roof. And I, and I know that solar is going to evolve, and materials that are solar generators are going to evolve. And they may come up with the Tesla version that looks like a shingle or something like that. I have no problems with that, but I think this, these guidelines and these guardrails that we're putting, that we're talking about putting up, are going to have to change over time as technology changes over time. So this is, this is kind of a, putting something in place for a certain time window, almost. And it would have to be readdressed as technology improves.
So Jill, this is Blake, and I'm right there with you. I get it, but I'm, as you're saying all this, and I'm sort of agreeing with that kind of aesthetic point of view, and I'm thinking about that. But at the same time, aesthetics evolve as the technology evolves too. I'm thinking about the number of, you know, unsightly gas meters that are still often in plain sight on homes in Huntington Woods, and whether or not there was ever a conversation about that. So, you know, I think the ambiguity of the language is going to be our greatest burden. And I think it's a real slippery slope if we say, no one can put it on the front of their house relative to the direction their home faces. So I do, I thought, I thought, other Jill, Inger's point about, you know, tree removal to achieve maximum solar capacity would be the strangest, darkest irony in the history of solar power. Let's take out trees so I have plenty of light to power my house. That seems absurd, but it's a great point, so.
I think we haven't heard from David Schwartz yet, is that right?
That's right. But I enjoyed everything else that people were saying. I guess the only other thing I would add in besides placement is we need to bulk, we need to define things. So ineffective or impractical are two of the words we use now within the ordinance. And we spent a lot of time talking about what that meant without any real decision made. So I think fine-tuning that for what we're, is an acceptable variance, is important.
David, are you thinking that for like impractical, like if you set a percentage of reduction that you would lose in solar energy if that was not allowed to be on the west side of the house, for example, or the north side of the house, or south side? If you were going to, by not allowing placement on the front of the house, if you were going to receive a reduction in power that you gain from that by over 25%, and I'm throwing a number out there, that you would consider that impractical or a practical difficulty as far as solar would go?
Right, I think we need to address that. And I think, if my recollection is correct, we started talking about summer usage versus winter usage, and summer, the sunlight would be, the batteries could store more. So when we get into all of that stuff, I think we need to put definitions in where appropriate, or at least ranges of guidance.
Yeah.
The other thing that you have to think about when you're talking about this is are you setting up guardrails for people who want to generate solar power and have it flow back into the grid? Or are you talking about people who want to generate enough solar power to power their homes, such as the one that came before us? Because when you're talking about things like that, and you're thinking about environmental impact, I hope that you're also thinking about the environmental impact of the storage system that's being used. What is the environmental impact to the amount of, with the amount of batteries you have to have in a house in order to store all this energy? What is the disposal of those? What is their lifespan? What is their time? People, people are thinking about this particular idea from the standpoint of generating the power, but are we also worried about the storage of the power? Do you want to have house after house after house with huge quantities of storage of batteries in them? What is the effect of that to our environment? So this is a really big question. So just putting that out there.
There's one other thing that you should be aware of too, that probably should be discussed in the mix, is whether or not you should be allowed to put solar panels on accessory structures. For example, you have a garage. A garage nobody can see, yet a garage may be one place where you can gain a lot of solar power, but then there's a cost inherent in running cable underground from the garage that's collecting the solar power to the retention center, which is typically in the basement of the house. So these are some things that you have to also consider as to what you want to do with that. And it may be that we need some more information on that type of system. Perhaps the EAC can provide us with some more information with that prior to the next meeting.
All right, thank you. We do, they do want to provide more information, so this is a really good first step to know what we should be addressing. So did we, did we get to everybody?
I think we did.
I would like an opportunity to speak again. I think I was skipped in the second round.
I'm sorry, Rick.
That's why we double check.
I would like to clarify that I'm in support of roof-mounted, per the current ordinance, not extending above. We do have to address some people that are coming in with flat roofs. But I don't think we can go as far as to discuss trees in that, or internal to the building's storage. I think that that might be going a little bit too far. My thought with the trees is, you know, a private tree, nothing stops me from taking it down right now. And if you included it, why wouldn't I just take it down now? And then in six months, install the solar system and get a permit for that. So I'm not saying that I love trees and I'm here for the trees, but I think we have to be careful with that, because then we go back to the tree discussions that were had before with the city, and who has the rights to those trees? And then I don't think we can control what someone puts in their house in terms of battery storage and that sort of thing. So I want to be careful with the appearance, but I also want to be supportive of technologies that are coming out and being able to utilize them on a lot of homes that the front of the house faces south, and that's the only way to utilize solar.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Rick.
Mike, you may want to, here before you finish this up, if there's any members of the Environmental Advisory Committee that wish to comment or ask any questions.
I was just going to go there next. I was going to ask Aaron to, there was any way, did he want to wrap it up, or were there any other questions that we should be probing on?
Thanks a lot. Thanks to everyone for your insights, your opinions, and caring about the solar, solar power, solar panel ordinance. I guess before our next meeting, I would ask you to do a couple of things individually. First is to look at the code as a stance now, especially Point B. And I would be very interested if you could individually send the EAC suggestions on how to clean that up. The second thing is, I would ask you to, when you're driving around other communities, Birmingham, Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, and you see a house with solar panels on it, to stop and look at it, and think about how you think it looks. And, yeah, just pause and reflect on that. I don't think that we have any houses in Huntington Woods with solar panels on it. Is that right?
No, there's. I think we do.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe you could stop there as well. This is all for roofs, and that's it. And what I think the EAC is asking us, asking you to do, is put us in line with Berkeley and Birmingham's policies. So anyways, that's, that's all that I really have to say. I don't know if there's anyone else in the EAC who wants to join.
You know, Amy, I just sent you, Ben Phalik got disconnected, and he's in the waiting room. He'd like to speak, I think.
Here, hang on, I can get him. Okay, he's joining. Just one point for Mike, just so that you know, rather than the planning commission submitting things directly to the EAC, I would prefer if you would go through City Hall so that we have some idea of what everybody's talking about. Otherwise, there's going to be conversations going on, and we can't relate them to any ordinances or any proposed discussions. So if you could have questions that you would like to send to the EAC, perhaps if you could go through here, and we could send them, get them to Aaron, or he could submit them, he could get them to the EAC. Be happy to do that, but I would hate to have a situation where it's like, remember what we talked about? No, we don't.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a great idea to have our repository. I think, I think Michael Egan wanted to speak up.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate your time, and a lot of the things that we were discussing earlier regarding the aesthetics, because we value aesthetics. We all live here too, and we think that they're really important. But I go back to what Hank said, that currently, they're a lot less jarring than I think when this original language was written. And one of the bigger concerns for us was people that want to employ this technology the way that the ordinance is written, not allowing it to be front-facing. And as we stated, like the streets in our neighborhood go every which way. Really, in Michigan, because of our latitude, anything that's not south-facing is going to be far less practical and not as cost-efficient. So there's so many people that if, you know, their south-facing side is facing the street, they're, you know, being left out of being able to adapt the technology. So that was one of the things that we really wanted to like, you know, kind of push forward, like opening that technology up to a lot of people that might be interested in it, but just because of where their house is positioned in the neighborhood, they're kind of left out. And, and again, like Aaron said, if you see a lot of the current stuff, it's in line with the roof, it follows similar colors, and it's not very jarring, other than looking at like asphalt shingles, like, so. But thanks for your time, and we appreciate you guys, like, opening this discussion and being open to it.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think it needed to happen. Ben, did you get in?
There he is.
He's in.
And he's muted.
Yes, I was off for a little while. I would just echo, I think that there's, one, my gratitude for everyone taking time to consider this and to have considered it broadly, you know, with both the unique and endearing, usually endearing, aspects of Huntington Woods, and how we want to be a model community more, you know, just beyond our, you know, mile and a half square. And that, that this is, I think, you know, in a lot of ways, like, an idea whose time has come. I don't know if anyone listens to podcasts, and one of the little ads for electric cars is like, oh, this used to be unfamiliar and weird and scary, like podcasts, but now it's something that we just see around, like charging stations. So I think it's, you know, we're not in trying to do this like way out ahead of the curve where it's going to backfire, because it's like LaserDiscs or something that goes out of style. But we're at a good, a good place where we can be very thoughtful about home values and about the street presence, and make, you know, a good, sustainable choice that really gives homeowners the, empowers them, and gives them this in their toolkit, to knowing that it's still very expensive, and the return on that investment takes.
and the return on that investment takes many years to do, that we want to give people all the tools that we think are appropriate to be good, good citizens, good neighbors. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Anybody else before we kind of ask Hank what we're supposed to do with this?
This is Bridget McKinley. I'm part of the EAC as well and just sitting here as an observer, but just wanted to let you know that we're really excited about the possibility of making solar more accessible for more neighbors while ensuring we maintain the character and standards that we value here in Huntington Woods. So we really value the time here today and hope that we can work together to make this possible and just to build ourselves towards the future and the future of Huntington Woods in a way that's more sustainable. So thank you.
Thanks, Bridget. Anybody else? Okay, Hank, so I guess that all said, what are we looking for next out of the commission?
Here's where, here's what I'm getting from, from everybody this evening. What we would like is for the planning commission to each email me directly some type of what they feel they like about the ordinance, what they would want to see, what is your wish list? What is your, what is your line in the sand? And that we could get ideas from you as to what it is that you're comfortable with or not. At that point in time, we can come back to you at the next meeting with some information. Say, well, you know, you don't want to do it next meeting?
No.
Okay.
Next meeting, the EAC will discuss what we discussed tonight.
Okay, then, then come back. So we're probably looking at October, November, give or take? Okay, all right.
You still want us to all shoot you some notes though, right?
Yeah, because while it's fresh in your mind and you, we've discussed it. I mean, let's get the information. Whether we give it to them information or they give us information, part of working together is, is the transference of information. So whatever you have, you do that, I would absolutely like to do that. And then we'll have that, at least we'll have it. We can work from there, but we'll have a basis to move forward.
Fair. All right, so no other action required of us other than that for now, correct?
That is correct. This was a discussion and that was all it was billed as.
Okay, great. Okay, I guess we will open it up for any other public participation on issues that we didn't discuss already. All right, hearing none, we'll close public participation and we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got all that, Hank?
Got it. You're being recorded, so we got it.
All right, thanks, everybody. Talk to you next month.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Bye, everyone.